是的，可以收到。
[S01]好的，那我们开始吧。
[S02]好的，没问题。
[S01]现在开始录音。
[S02]好的，没问题。
[S01][S01]好的，没问题。
[S02][S02]好的，没问题。
[S01][S01]好的，没问题。
[S02][S02]好的，没问题。
[S01][S01]好的，没问题。
[S02]好的，没问题。
[S01]好的，没问题。
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 [S02]好的，没问题。
Is everybody ready? Yes. Thank everybody for their patience. We were in executive session prior to the meeting, so we're starting a little later than usual. And with that, I call this meeting to order. Mrs. Widener, roll call. Dr. Campley, Mr. Fountain.
Here.
Mr. Keenan.
Here.
Mr. Leggett.
Here.
Mr. McKinnney.
Here.
Ms. Sadler.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Dr. Weston.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
And we can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, and we will go ahead with the reading of the Perkyum Valley Mission Statement. Mr. Keenan, would you mind reading the statement tonight?
Fortunately, I have it prepared. The mission of the Perkyum Valley School District is to cultivate an inclusive community of learners empowered to grow intellectually, socially, and emotionally.
Thank you so much, Mr. Keenan. 4.05 is the approval of the agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Against? The agenda is approved. 1.06 is the approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
A motion.
A second?
Second.
And I... All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The minutes are approved. 1.07 is a special recognition, and I'll turn it over to Mr. McKinnney.
Good evening. The Perkyum Valley School District Board of Directors would like to acknowledge two exceptional students. Both of these students dedicated a piece of impressive artwork to the Perkyum Valley High School Permanent Collection. And I hope it don't mess up your last name, Jack. Jack Magarist, a PV High School junior, donated his piece, "The Bear." The piece was created in 2023 using pencil, Sharpie, and colored Sharpie. Dynamic lighting and value creates the visions of a ferocious beast. The bear is made to look as though it was leaping from the paper. Not only do the winding bands both show the sharp and movement of the beast, but also draw the eye to its hollow and ventral face. Within the jaws are teeth colored yellow and red, creating a peaking grin of the real creature. Like the real thing, this piece is considerably large, and its size only puts the pressure of its weight on the viewer. Let's give Jack a hand. Come on down, Jack. Our second acknowledgement is for Sid Libby, a 2023 Perkyum Valley graduate, now attending Roman University for biomedical art and visualization. She has donated her piece, "Seracrapia," a four-foot by four-foot acrylic painting on wood. This piece, which examines the environment and nature through an imaginary dreamlike lens, is from Sid's AP drawing portfolio and was created in the spring of 2023 while she was working on sustained investigation as part of her 15-piece portfolio. In this work, the colors of the moth are exaggerated, and it's decorated with cartoon-like shapes making the markings on the organism. She says the piece doesn't look realistic and isn't meant to. It's like a moth you'd see in a children's book. Sid hopes to continue making more pieces like this in the future. The Board of Directors would like to extend sincere thanks to both Sid and Jack for their donations. Sid?
Your son is great. He's hilarious. Thank you both so much for your hard work, and I hope that you both continue making beautiful art. In the fact that we started a little late, is everyone okay if we skip the five-minute recess? I think we did our photo. We're good? Okay, great. So then that brings us to 1.08, which is comments on any topic. I'll remind folks, if they should choose to speak, you have three minutes. Please state your name and municipality. And if there is anyone registered, I didn't actually look to see. I see Russ Larson was the first name I saw, definitely wanting to speak. You can come to the podium.
Try again. Russ Larson, Skipback Township. Thank you. On January 3rd, the Board President, Ms. White, sent an update to existing policy committee members with a decision on how a policy committee will be structured going forward. The takeaway is that community members will be removed from the policy committee. The rationale given for this change is twofold: one, to improve the productivity, and two, to garner more community involvement. I think this is a significant mistake. I'm not expecting to change your mind on this necessarily, but I want to offer my perspective. And I do recognize and applaud the careful consideration that you and the team put into drawing up this change. And that being said, having a few at-large community members seated on the policy committee has only served to enhance the collection of ideas, the debate of the worthiness of those ideas, and the uncovering of consequences or implications that each new proposal will have on students and the community. In other words, increasing the transparency. I offer three examples for my own contributions to the committee. First, police. As this policy was being written, the police officer's ability to interview students would have potentially infringed on their constitutional Fifth Amendment right because, as I asserted during the discussion, minor-age students lack the wherewithal, understanding, or maturity to waive their rights, especially under the pressure of a police officer questioning them. And I made the case that we must include a provision in the policy that parents must consent to their minor child waiving their right to remain silent. Policy committee and the entire board agreed, win-win. Secondly, 103 discrimination. As the bathroom issue arose and the board was debating what approach to take to satisfy students' and community concerns, I raised the fact that the existing policy, 103, had more wide-ranging ramifications than bathroom usage alone. Specifically, I made it transparent to the community that the policy allowed any student to join a single-sex sports team if their gender aligned with that sex. Administration confirmed my understanding of 103 to be correct. This enabled the board and the community to think of this issue more broadly than just the student bathroom issue. And my last example, books with explicit sexual content. It was my proposal that we put in an administrative process to increase transparency through the website so that parents would know the books that are available to students, and they could make an informed decision. And it was my proposal to install an opt-out process. I helped administration think of this process and how to put it in place. Ms. White stated that changing the approach to policy committee will allow more community contribution. The problem with that supposition is that the community already has access to contribute via the three-minute podium comments, so this new approach reduces community involvement. It does not expand community inclusion. My time's up. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Is there anyone else? Seeing no other public comment, we will move on to the Student Liaisons Report. Mr. Ken Worthy and Ms. Tremba.
Good evening. We'd like to start by saying welcome back. We're excited for the new year and the progress we hope to see the district achieve. Just in the last few days, our students have had lots of achievements that we'd like to share with you all today.
Firstly, athletics. Congratulations to our PV basketball players, Julian Sadler, Grace Galvive, and Quinn Bettinger on reaching 1,000 points. This is a big achievement, and we're excited to see all that they continue to do. Congratulations to our PV's competition cheer team who competed at districts this past weekend and qualified for states. We wish the best of luck at Hershey.
We'd also like to congratulate our music department. Special shout-out to our musicians who qualified for district orchestra and district band. And congratulations to our choir department who celebrated their seniors at their cabaret event this Friday evening.
One other highlight we would like to spotlight is the ski and snowboard club. They traveled to Vermont on Friday. They went to Okima Ski Resort, and they enjoyed seven to eight inches of fresh powder, unlike us here in PA, which I was kind of jealous of, but, you know, we get what we get.
Looking forward, Martin Luther King Day is approaching, and we'd like to encourage the community to get out and get involved. The district offers various service opportunities, and we'd love to see you all there.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And to segue from that, as part of the president's report tonight, I actually was provided a statement from the folks that are responsible for organizing the Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service, and I'll just go ahead and read it just so it is on the record and available to the community. We're looking forward to the 2024 Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service on Monday, January 15th. That's next Monday, and we hope you can join us. We have a variety of opportunities for all age-level students. Elementary and middle school students, there will be in-person events at the high school cafeteria, and students will rotate, as they have in past years, between different stations, completing various service projects to support local organizations such as St. Christopher's Hospital for Children, First Book Philadelphia, the Cecil and Grace Bean Soup Kitchen, America's Vet Dogs, and a local VA hospital, nursing home, and fire station. One of our exciting new activities this year is a stuff-a-plushy station, similar to Build-A-Bear, and the stuffed animals made by PV students will be given to Philadelphia Children's Hospital. The live event will take place at Perkyum Valley High School from 9:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. One session will be at 9:00 and the other at 11:00. Elementary school students must be accompanied by an adult, and middle school students can be dropped off. For those unable to attend the live event, please still be aware that you can sign up. And there is going to be take-home kits available that will be delivered out on Thursday of this week. That signup is closed, but several extra will be available in each school office, should there be any interest. And then they are on a first-come, first-served basis. And finally, for those in the community who would like to take a... Would like a quick and easy way to make a difference, there will be a drive-through donation station at Evergreen Elementary. Goods can be dropped off on Monday, January 15th, from 10:00 to 1:00. Please check PVSD homepage for a list of items that are being collected. And then there will be a link to sign up for the event on the PVSD homepage. I believe a separate communication will go out via email, not only from each individual building and their newsletters, but also from district office, and we hope that you can join us. It's been a very successful event in the past. I don't know how many of you have had the opportunity or the privilege to participate, but it's really a wonderful and really well-planned day. So I invite and extend that same invitation to all board members as well. Thank you so much. And that brings us to Dr. Russell Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. White. And just as a follow-up to your report, we did send an email out Friday. And it will also... It's also on social media, and the events for Monday will also be publicized in the newsletter that I send out Wednesday this week. So really trying to continue to extend that invitation to our community. All right, for my report this month, first of all, this is Board Recognition Month, so I want to recognize our board members, say a little bit about them and some of the work that they do, and also talk about school police officers, Safe and Supportive Schools, and School Culture and Climate Survey. So you can see there's a theme here with those last three items, really connected to school safety. But first, January is Board Recognition Month, and I just want to make sure that all are aware. The nine board members that you see here are volunteers. They volunteer their time, and in some months, a lot of it. They are elected to a four-year term. And in the past several years, as I've been an administrator in the district for some time, but the past several years have been some of the most challenging years in public education. So I applaud their dedicated service, and those that are willing to serve and were just elected, I thank you for your willingness. As a token of our appreciation, I'm going to borrow Mr. McKinnney's gift. We have provided board members with an umbrella, a PV umbrella, and a really cute little screensaver, or cleaner, excuse me, and then a cookie that we will be distributing to our students when they are recognized each month. So just a small token of appreciation for all that you do for our school district. This is one of the nicer pics that we've had in some years, so I wanted to also put that on the screen and then call out that the variety of professional experiences that you as board members bring to the team, the team of 10, is extremely valuable to the decisions that we end up making. And I appreciate the time you dedicate to listening and engaging, not only with administration, but with our community. Really appreciate that. appreciate that, as well as your commitment to learning, having all the information you need before you act. It's very much appreciated, and thank you for your continued motivation to serve the community and our students. So with that, if I could offer a round of applause for our board, that would be great. This is not easy work, but thank you, truly. So let's segue into some conversation about school police officers. We have welcomed school police officers onto our team this year, and we have a few, actually just four of the seven that were board-approved last year. And in advance of those school police officers coming into our district and becoming a part of our team, because that's a major step for our school district, there was a lot of time dedicated to policy development and administrative regulation development. And one of the administrative regs came up recently in a committee meeting. So I just thought I would share some additional information with the public about some of the ways we are welcoming school police officers to our team and acclimating them to our schools. And we've been really fortunate to have four wonderful additions to our safety and security team. As part of their introduction, onboarding and professional development, we refer to Administrative Reg 805.20. So that means it aligns to Policy 805.2, which is school security personnel. It articulates the professional development that the district sees as really important for these individuals as part of our team to also be a part of. So they will move through, this was a draft schedule that's been developed, they will move through a series of onboarding activities. They all participated in five onboarding activities under the leadership of our Chief of Police, Mr. Miller, as well as some other administrators who specialize in different areas of the professional development that we want to expose the school police officers to. We want to engage them in. There have been a couple of little adjustments, but you get a sense of some of the experiences, the learning experiences, that our school police officers will move through. And we'll continue to work on this and probably tweak it. The legwork that was done back to develop the Administrative Reg 805.2AR0 was really helpful, and it helped guide how we, again, welcome these individuals onto our team, and we're really appreciative of the service that they're providing and the relationships that they are immediately building with individuals in their school communities. More to come on that. I'll try and keep you updated on some of the events. We do have another round of interviews coming up this week to try and fill the remaining open positions for school police officers in our district. As we talk about Safe and Supportive Schools, there is a superintendent's roundtable this week on Wednesday evening with a focus on Safe and Supportive Schools. I will be joined by Mr. Miller and Dr. Moss to talk about some of the considerations that we make to support our schools being safe and supportive for our students. And you see a couple of things there in a list, a bulleted list. We'll also talk about some of the efforts that we make to build relationships with our students and to support our students based on their social, emotional, and mental health needs today, in addition to the protocols that we have established and that we follow. So if you're interested, that meeting will take place here in this auditorium Wednesday evening, and it's on our district calendar. And lastly, we have a School Culture and Climate Survey that parents will be hearing about in my newsletter this week. So we are, we've done this climate survey before, and we really, we administer it to a couple of different stakeholder groups, and we inform parents before students are offered the opportunity to take this survey. So parents will be made aware of it and have an opportunity to review it. I've included a link here for elementary students and their parents if they'd like to review this, but we'll also send it out formally as part of my newsletter. But we really want to know how students are feeling in their school community, what they're experiencing, and where we can ultimately focus to make sure the experiences are as positive as possible. So you see an example of some of the survey questions here for students. It will also be administered to staff and parents, students at the elementary level in grades four and five, and secondary level six through 12, and then we also have staff and parents. This is a timeline. We hope to administer between the window or the dates of January 16th and January 26th, and then we'll conduct some data analysis, and I will certainly report back to the board and the community some of what we learn and what we will propose to do in response. And with that, it ends my report.
Thank you, Dr. Russell. Is there a solicitor's report tonight, Mr. Subers?
Yes, there is. Dr. Russell requested that I respond to an inquiry from a member of the public regarding a fifth board member attending the assessment committee last week. And what I would note is that the board member's attendance at that committee meeting was neither a violation of board policy or school code, nor the Sunshine Law. Basically, our committee meetings are advertised, public comment is allowed. The one implication of having a fifth member in attendance at a committee meeting is that it could be viewed as a board meeting requiring public comment, but we allow public comment in our committee meetings anyway. Additionally, I would just note that any board member is always invited to attend a committee meeting. They would just participate as a non-committee member. So that's my only comment.
Thank you, Mr. Subers. And then that takes us to board and committee, board and district committee reports. And just briefly, I think Mr. Larson left, but I wanted to just comment very quickly about the policy meeting. We do have a policy meeting coming up this month. I did send an email to the, just as an introduction of myself, and also to the previous policy committee as it stood with assigned board members. And he is correct that I did indeed decide with the conversation had with Dr. Russell and Mr. McKinney that we would move to more of an open forum for policy committee meetings. And the idea behind that is for full transparency and full engagement from any community that would like to be invested in the work of building policy. So without designated, you know, attendance being taken, you know, the conversations that I've had with regard to limiting policy committee engagement to designated individuals was the inability for others to come out and truly participate in the building of policy. So there will no longer be a section for comments from the audience, similar to the board meeting, where you're limited to three minutes. It will be truly a working meeting, and any public that would like to actually do the work of policy and engage in conversation of policy during a policy committee meeting is welcome to join, and attendance will be taken, and then they will be kept abreast, you know, once an attendance roll. And we'll go forward with that and see, you know, traditionally, policy meetings are very boring. In general, there's usually not a huge turnout. Obviously, that has not been the case of late, and the work is very, very important. It is the work of the district, and it truly does shape and guide who we are as a district and as a community. So I invite, and I did invite Mr. Larson to continue joining, as well as Mrs. Lofton, and those were two individuals that were previously appointed. So I just wanted to make that one comment about policy. Are there any other updates regarding committees that people have comments about?
I do, Ms. White. If I could share, I would like to announce to the board and the community, I've shared this with the board, that I would like to propose morphing the superintendent roundtable conversations with the Communications Advisory Committee. There's a lot of overlap there, and I would really like to make an effort to engage the community in conversations that they're interested in. That's often the purpose of the roundtable. Sometimes it has a topic that we focus on. Other times, it's really open to whatever individuals in attendance would like to talk about. So I'm working on morphing and blending those two committees, and there are some additional dates that have been added where we will focus on effective communication as well as parent engagement, and how we might support that and nurture it to be stronger. I also want to call out that Dr. Boyd and I are partnering on an ad hoc committee, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council Task Force or Committee. This is a nationwide organization where parents have a voice in the area of special education, and administrators can learn from parents firsthand. Dr. Boyd and I are actually thinking about, we do have some dates now, we're thinking about holding these meetings off-site in the community, where maybe it would be more comfortable for individuals to attend, as opposed to, say, the high school library. So stay tuned for that. But we're really looking forward to hearing from the voices of our parents, of our special education students. So that's the purpose of that ad hoc committee in the table this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Russell. And then that brings us to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I think at the working session, we don't necessarily approve it. It's just that if there's any items that a board member would like removed from the consent agenda, they may so note at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Subers. The consent agenda, okay, as presented. Okay, seeing no issue. We will move on to education. And Todd, if you would handle that section for us this week.
Yes. First item is 4.01, Education Committee, the whole, and I believe Dr. Dietrich will be handling that.
Yes. This evening, Dr. Russell and I are going to do a lot of tag-teaming. We do have a number of items, the full-day kindergarten, which we're going to tag-team on, the facility dog request, which Dr. Boyd is going to present on, our flexible instructional days. Dr. Russell will handle that one, as will she handle the Youth Development Center of Southeastern Pennsylvania. And finally, we'll be presenting our enrollment and staffing update for your information. So the first one would be the full-day kindergarten, and I'm going to throw it to Dr. Russell, and we're going to tag-team on that one.
Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. So as the board and community are aware, we are implementing full-day kindergarten in the upcoming 24-25 school year. And there's a lot of legwork. There's a lot of planning and preparation that goes into making the shift from half-day kindergarten to full day. Registration opens tomorrow and is open to students who will be five by September 1st, 2024. So we're excited to welcome new students to kindergarten next year and afford them a full day of instruction. I've prepared a slide here with just some general information. I'm not going to read through the items, but it's reference. It will be here for board members and for the public. There's a lot of words on this slide, but it articulates some of the work that's happening right now as we prepare. There is a subcommittee that's been developed primarily of administration and teacher leaders that are working together to review aspects of what will the experience be for our students when they come into full-day kindergarten. So they're reviewing the life in the day of a full-day kindergarten student or year in Perkyomen Valley. So these are the individuals that are currently on the subcommittee and contributing to those conversations on a weekly basis. So by the end of January, our goal is to have a schedule. How will students move through the day, and what are the curricular adjustments or revisions we need to make as we move from a half-day of instruction to a full day? We'll look at other aspects of preparing for full-day kindergarten in February, and then we have some ideas around how do we help parents transition to full-day kindergarten, and hope to communicate and begin to initiate those in March. Professional learning for our staff, we're encouraging them to visit other school districts that have full-day kindergarten, orientation nights for parents, and then in May, our students will be invited in for screening appointments. So for the registration that opens tomorrow, it'll be a little different than the registration of the past in that students and parents will not come to school. This is strictly the online uploading of documents. And then in May, our buildings will contact the students that have submitted the paperwork, or the families, rather, that have submitted the documentation to register and invite them in for a screening appointment, a brief screening. So we're looking forward to meeting our new families, our new students, and of course, monitoring the enrollments and the number of students that we will be welcoming in the fall. But we wanted to give you a sense of some of the work that's happening and how, right now, that workflow will look, based upon the conversations on the part of this subcommittee and our elementary principals, who have been intimately involved in the process. There will be work over the summer as well. Here are some estimated costs, and the personnel cost, really, our support staff, paraprofessionals. Our board has agreed to consider, anyway, four additional paraprofessionals to support full-day kindergarten. We currently have four. One per kindergarten level, if you will, in each of the buildings, and administration has proposed adding another one with our students attending for a full day. So those costs, those expenses that you see there are for salary and benefits for those support staff, as well as a cafeteria monitor to support Skip Back. So our full-day kindergarten students will be participating in lunch, a separate lunch period just for them. They won't be combined with other students in the building. So there's a lot to think about, and the group is intimately, really taking a dive in and intimately working on what needs to happen to provide the best possible experience for our students. Some greater detail about some of the types of furniture and planned expenditures being considered as we move forward. So furniture, resources, human resources, a lot to think about. Any board or public comment about full-day kindergarten and the information presented?
This is an exciting time for us. I had the pleasure of serving in my previous school district during a time period when we adopted full-day kindergarten, and I'm looking forward to the steps that are necessary here, and the involvement of everyone to make this something I know we will all be proud of when we get this off the ground here in this coming August.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. And it's really been helpful to have Dr. Dietrich on as part of our team because of the experiences he brings to the, to the group with respect to full-day kindergarten and many other things, but that's what we're talking about here. So at any rate, let's transition to facility dog proposal. And I see we have a contingent from Middle School West here. They're up with this proposal, and I've asked Dr. Boyd if she would come out front and center, because she's sort of in the back there at her table space. But an exciting proposal, and I really appreciate the support from those of you at West who have come out to hear this proposal and show your support in turn for it. So thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Dr. Russell. So this evening, we do, we are bringing forward to the board a request for a facility dog, the actual purchase on the part of the school district, to purchase a dog from Middle School West. And this slide here really just captures the broad overview. The first-year cost would be not to exceed $10,000, and then for year two moving forward, the annual cost would be approximately $2,000 per year. There's been a lot of work in the background taking place, and I'll get to that in a few minutes. The dog would be purchased through DogSense. The purchase price of the dog is $7,550, and then the additional costs are the food, the annual supplies, veterinarian bills, grooming, and pet insurance. Next slide, please. So the journey. How did we get here this evening? Well, that really comes to credit over here. It really started with a student. We talk a great deal about student voice. This initiative, this proposal, really started with a student, Ava Bolino, who is here today. It started with her, in her sophomore year, with a passion project through the Innovation Lab. And Ava did her research and pitched this, really, in her coursework, and then took it to Mrs. Zalinski, who was her school counselor at the high school at the time. From there, they took it to their house principal, Mr. Marsh, and then, as you can see, the next spring, or actually, I guess in the spring of that year, they did some multiple school visits. They went to East Penn and Warwick School District. That information then came to committees. It came to the Wellness Committee originally, and then it came to the board last June. There was some initial talk about it, but we felt like we needed more data, more information, and we really wanted West at that point, Mrs. Zalinski shifted to West, and we wanted to see, has West ever experienced therapy dogs? So across the district for at least 10 or more years, we have had a lot of visiting therapy dogs to the district. This proposal is different. So what West did is they trialed visiting therapy dogs, and they collected data, and they brought those findings to the Wellness Committee in the fall. And we are returning to you now with the proposal, after the Wellness Committee is supporting this, to request that motion to purchase a dog. There's research around this that says all of these things. It impacts school climate and culture. It assists our students with their emotional and behavioral regulations. It has impacts on literacy skills, improves gross motors. Again, It has impacts on literacy skills, improves gross motors. Again, I don't have to read all of this, but I think that we have seen a lot of the effects, as well as what's happening in our other schools. So many of our schools have the visiting therapy dogs, but there's a difference here. Can we go to the next slide, please? A therapy dog would be a dog that's onsite every day as opposed to just visiting. And why? Our why is really, we want to offer a different type of therapeutic approach that we haven't done before, to really address the social, emotional well-being, the cognitive and the health development of our students and our staff, as well as the community. And what we mean by that is, we see this as preventative, proactive, and post-trauma. So what happens currently, and we've done this for years, when there is a trauma or a tragedy, whether it's in our school district, or across the community, or within the county, or even across multiple counties, we have teams of human resources that descend upon schools to help offer support. We typically have our school counselors, our school psychologists, as well as our social workers. And we take those human resources, and we go to the site. We've experienced that here in Perkyomen Valley with tragedies that have occurred within our schools. And we've taken our staff, and we've gone out to other districts. What this would be is a dog to help do that. And the one thing I'd like to share about that is when we visited, well, I did not visit. The team over here has visited some of the schools. But I had the opportunity to talk to the Assistant Superintendent at Warwick School District. Five years ago, their district was faced with a tragedy that occurred at dismissal time right out front of the high school. And part of the support process in that recovery was visiting dogs to the school. And the dogs had a significant impact on the healing process for the staff and the students. And from there, their vision came to fruition in terms of, we want to do something where we have therapy dogs or facility dogs in our school district. Fast forward five years, they now have six dogs, one in each of their school buildings, and two facility dogs at district office. What they have is they refer to these dogs as their flight team. And what they do is, when there's a tragedy or a trauma, whether it's in their district, their neighboring, their surrounding school districts, their county, this team of dogs and their handlers or caretakers travel to the other schools and offer that supportive visiting therapy. So with that, we're starting with one dog. I do believe that this will grow. We do know that we have other buildings in our district that would like to take this on as well. However, the research, the data, the framework, the foundation has been laid by Middle School West at this point. From the funding perspective, we could use district funds for the initial purchase, and Middle School West has funds set aside that could be used for the initial outlay of costs. And I'll get to that in a minute. We have, we are requesting that the additional, the anticipated annual cost be added to the district's budget moving forward. There are options for fundraising that remain feasible. We've explored some of that, but the school has not done any fundraising until we know whether or not this is something we can move forward with. There's also been exploration for donations or discounts for the services that are needed. So for example, the food supply, veterinary bills, grooming. There are organizations, there is businesses within our community that we know are willing to offer donations. And we have started the conversation preliminary with the PV Foundation, and we are exploring a grant for this actual program. The next slide, if it would be approved, there's a timeline for this, and there's different amounts of money that go along with each of the phases. The first phase would be the signing of a contract. It would be an initial outlay of $5,000. What that would do is secure then the selection and the training of the dog. The timeline could be anywhere from one month to 18 months. So DogSense does this. They have worked with these neighboring school districts. They've worked with East Penn. They've worked with Warwick School District. That's where those districts have received their dogs. So DogSense works with animals, has dogs that are in training. And what they would do is really look for the right fit of a dog to our school. Phase two would then be training, I'm sorry, would be the selection and the training. And there would be an initial meeting where DogSense would come out, and they would speak to us about the roles and responsibilities. Then there would be applications submitted for the role of the caretaker and the handler. Currently, we do have about 12 staff members at Middle School West who would have expressed interest in this. There could be more, once we learn more about those roles and responsibilities. But that process, that selection process, would be done with DogSense and then approval with Middle School West Administration. That timeline can be anywhere from two weeks to three months, and it's occurring simultaneous with phase one. Once the staff are selected to be in these positions, there would be additional training that would take place. And then there would also be final onsite training with basically an assessment. So yes, our staff will take a test to make sure that they are trained and able to fulfill the roles of the handler and the caretaker. Phase three would be a follow-up in year two, and it would occur after we receive the dog. And then there would be additional training. And this would be an opportunity as well. If there was anyone that was interested in now being a handler that was not originally selected, we could do additional training. And then this last slide really is just to give you a cost analysis of what the breakdown would actually be to have a dog onsite. It would end up, the first year, it would cost us $8.80. And in year two, moving forward, a cost per hour is $1.83, or $11 per day. And we believe that this program, having a dog, would have a great benefit for our staff and our students, and ultimately, our community. So I don't know, does the board have any questions for me? I am truly the spokesperson for our Middle School West team, and they are here and can also support with answering any questions that the board might have.
Any questions or comments or anything?
Yeah, just, I've been part of the Wellness Committee since this started from inception, so I'm really glad that this came to the board in the position of making it real, rather than putting it into the budget. One thing I noticed that wasn't in there, I know we talked about this at the Wellness Committee meeting, and I asked this question just because I want to see this be successful long-term in seven buildings. Was there the thought process in making the individual, you know, we talked about in the Wellness Committee meeting how a coach has a per diem or an additional salary. Was there a thought process in formulating some type of position like this for the handler, for the extracurricular activities that happened outside of the normal school day? That's something that, in the long run, I think would be a big benefit to make this more substantial and real.
And that is something I know we spoke about. I spoke with Mrs. Zalinski, Mrs. Moylan, and Mrs. Piatone afterwards. We talked about how that might look. There's several options there. We could certainly explore that. We'd have to talk more with Dr. Russell with regards to, would it be a co-curricular type of position? Or is it something that, when we start, and I think our proposal would be, is that in that initial year, is to start with maybe two, three, or four, something like that, a certain number of maybe after-school events, and potentially pay then the curricular rate for the hours that the handler would be there and be present. And then from there, again, evaluate that as we move forward to determine how that would fit.
Hey, lots of potential.
Yes, Ms. White.
I wanted to say thank you. I'm glad that we got as far as this, for the approval of the purchase of this dog. I wanted to know if there have been any discussions around a timeline for potential rollout into phase into the other buildings in the district.
And again, at our Wellness Committee, I'm looking over here, because some of these ladies were with us, with me, and we did present that. What we did talk about is, we do know that Middle School East is very much interested, right? And, but last year, when these conversations were taking place, the lead person left the district. So we have somebody new who is very interested, has been working closely with Mrs. Zalinski. And what we would like to do and propose is that this year, should this proposal pass, use West as the model and allow then our other schools, again, to visit, to ask questions, and then develop their proposal that we could ultimately bring forward. So again, this could be potentially a rolling process. Like I shared, we are exploring some fundraising opportunities. We want to engage in a conversation with the foundation. So there's other avenues potentially to pursue maybe the initial outlay of costs to purchase a dog.
Okay, just make sure that I understand. So are you proposing then, or are you saying that each building would have to make their own campaign for the animal? Or can you clarify that?
No, I think they're going to use the first, I apologize.
As a pilot.
As a first year as a pilot year, potentially work out any kinks, and then see if the administration want to move forward to.
Expand it, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a, I do have a question. If this, assuming we have the votes that this gets passed today, I know we talked about, it could be three months to 18 months till the dog is ours. Assuming this passes today, do we notify her tomorrow, like this is ready to go? Or is this, Mr. Reed, does this have to wait?
I don't believe it has to wait for anything. Everything seems to be in order.
So we could alert them tomorrow that, hey, we're ready to move forward with the dog and get into the queue?
Yes. We would get a contract from the organization. We'd have to sign that. And then, yes, we could basically give them the deposit, and then they could start the process in securing the dog. Mr. Powton?
Then I guess my last question would be, I'm sorry, did I cut somebody off? Mr. Powton, go ahead, sir.
Okay. I just actually was going to congratulate not only Ms. Zalinski, but the entire Middle School West team, because I think that this is an amazingly solid idea in every way, not only for the students at West, but also for the staff at West. So I give them a big hand and a big congratulations on all the work they put into it.
They have certainly persevered. They've gone through a lot.
Now, the student presentation, I was part of, I was able to see that, and it really was wonderful. And this is truly how you impact change and stay at it and stick to it. And if you believe in something, that is exactly, comes to fruition. So congratulations on all of the efforts there, absolutely. And so then, the only other, last question I have is about the policies around the implementation of the dog. Would that then be, if it's approved tonight, for the purchase of the dog, would that come to policy this month? Or is that something that needs to be, how has that developed?
We already have the policies in place.
Fabulous.
So we took care of that. I did not include that in our timeline.
No worries.
But that was something that, when, again, the idea came to fruition, we took a look at policy, and said, we don't have anything in place at the present moment. And we did look to the other school districts, and that has been in place for a year or so, yes.
This is the last piece then. Wonderful. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd, and thank you once again to the West team. It's exciting, the presentation. So I'm going to transition to something that's a little less exciting, but that you need to be informed about. A couple of years ago, the state offered schools an opportunity for flexible instructional days. There's an application that can be filled out. In the event, there is inclement weather. You can use up to five flexible instructional days. And I think this has been discussed in our district. Some of us really appreciate the opportunity to hold a virtual day so as not to add to the end of the year. Others of us don't appreciate virtual days so much. There's been some division there. At any rate, I want you to know that Perkyomen Valley did not get the application into the state. So we will not be calling flexible instructional days this year. Therefore, we will use, which was the original plan, the three built-in inclement weather days. And then, in the event, there are additional inclement weather days. We'll have to add those to the calendar. Let's hope that's not the case. Speaking of weather, this week could be a tough one, too, again, with the potential for flooding. But flexible and service days are relatively new. We're looking to consider that and propose it to our board for next year. Any comment, questions on flexible instructional days? Okay. I want to introduce to the board and public, as well as to our community, the Southeastern Youth Development Center. This is really a new development in the district. We learned in December that there will be a secure detention facility placed on the grounds of SCI Phoenix, the old Graterford Prison, as it was referred to. And students will be court placed there, and we, as the school district, are responsible for educating them. So this is really new information, and there's a lot we don't know yet, but we are exploring and learning more about. You see on this slide a couple of bulleted points that give you some general information about what we've learned. Stay tuned, there will be additional information. The target operation date is May 15th, as in this spring, May 15th, 2024, where we will have some number of students placed in the school, six to 12, and get started on working to educate them. And as time goes on, we'll get into more detail about what that will look like. But for now, I wanted, again, this to be announced in public, for the public, as well as our board, that this facility will be coming to the Perkyomen Valley School District very soon.
Dr. Russell, you might want to just mention that these students would not be integrated with our school population, that it would be a segregated program.
Thank you. Yes. So just to emphasize what Mr. Subers has just reminded me of, this is a secure detention facility. Students would not be integrating or coming to activities at Perkyomen Valley, participating in music ensembles or on sports teams. We would not be transporting the students. So that's an important note. This is a very different and new venture for the district. So again, as administration learns more, we will continue to offer that up to our community and keep you informed, as well as the board, of course.
I want to add that the DHS has not provided the school district or the school board adequate information for this operational start date. And as we get closer to that start date, because we're talking a couple months away, that, you know, we might, as a board, need to have to hold more than just a monthly meeting to get updates on where we stand with this, because the information provided, it's just not enough for us to pass a budget, create a budget, find personnel, handle all those issues that come with what they want. Their expectations are great, but the reality is, it's a very short timeline.
Yeah. And I've shared with the board, there was one other school district in the Commonwealth that has moved through the same process at a very fast pace. There's been some really good questions from our board in response to us learning this. I mean, we learned about it in the middle of December. Here we are in January. So it's been really new news, and I can appreciate the questions and the concerns and the desire for more detailed information. So we will work to continue to try and get that and provide it to our board and keep the board abreast of what it is we need to know and can do, or is our being asked to do. So I appreciate the questions that you've posed. Yes, yes, you can, sure.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. That's a good question, and an important one. So right now, what I have learned and shared with our board is that we are being allocated a dollar amount from the state and have to figure out the programming and allocate those funds that we've been allocated. So right now, this is not an expenditure that the district has to take on. We will be given the revenues, if you will, to become a revenue stream, and then an expenditure, of course. And then there are opportunities to actually, because the students are non-residents, to bill their home schools. So right now, there's not a hit to our budget, if you will, or an impact.
Can I just clarify that there wouldn't be a hit to our budget on year one, but there could be a hit to our budget on year two?
Well, that's a fair statement. As Mr. Saylor has looked to the future, we don't know next year's budget before next year. So we don't have the details about next year. For this year, the monies are being allocated to the district right now, based on what we know, to be expended to educate these students. But you are correct, we don't know what the future holds in terms of the budget. Other questions? So I'll try and keep you updated with the information as we get it. Last bit of information in the Education Committee, the whole, is that standard enrollment and staffing projections, and they've been updated just a little bit based on current enrollments. So updated for January, really minor adjustments. And again, we've looked at not only a 10% increase in the kindergarten enrollment, but also a 20% increase. What does that do to our enrollments and our staffing needs? How does it impact? Looking at middle schools, there, again, continues to be a decline in enrollment. And so you will see that as we roll over grade levels, and the enrollments move over and up one grade. Also, at the high school, you'll see a decline. These are the preliminary staffing requests or proposals. These have been reviewed with our board. And this is the net difference. In the event, kindergarten increases 10% versus 20%. And right now, there is a request to consider two additional special education teachers. So with that, you will see that the district could end up adding two staff So with that, you will see that the district could end up adding two staff requests or up to four at a maximum, um, based on what happens with our kindergarten enrollment. So again, something that we're paying very close attention to and will keep you informed of. Any board or public comment on enrollment and staffing? Okay, thank you.
Traditionally, when do we normally see a spike in the kindergarten registration? So it opens now. Will, will there be like a, a rush of initial registrations and then a lull and then another peak? How does the pace of that go?
Usually we see the bulk of the registrations at the onset of registration. And then it will calm down. And then as individuals may move in or out of the district in the spring, we'll see some, some changes. And then in the summer, we typically get a few more, but not like what we will see in the coming weeks.
And I, I would imagine that kindergarten, families of kindergarten aged children have been following along. But should they have not, um, been apprised of the fact that we will have full day kindergarten? Is there a communication that's going out, community-wise, that will inform potential families that kindergarten is now full day?
So we have traditionally reached out to our preschools. We have also, um, posted it on social media. We have some signs that we've put around throughout the district to help inform individuals. Those families that aren't in our system right now are the ones that we may need to get to. So I appreciate your reference. So we've done things like that to try and reach them. And I'll also put it again in my newsletter this week. So that if they have neighbors or friends or, or know individuals with children in our schools, hopefully this will become something they talk about and are aware of.
Hey, Mr. McKinney, this concludes administration's presentation and we have the action recommended as listed.
Thank you, Dr. Russell, Dr. Dietrich. Four point zero two, approval of facility dog at Middle School West. Motion to approve facility dog. Request to approve the purchase of a facility dog for Middle School West. The dog will be purchased from Dog Sense LLC at a cost of seven thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Purchase price in addition to expenses are projected not to exceed ten thousand dollars in the first year. Expenses include costs associated with food, annual supply, treats and toys, grooming, veterinary care, and pet insurance. Annual cost in year two and into future years are projected to be approximately two thousand dollars per year. Do I hear a motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
All for a vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item, approval of field trips. Motion to approve field trips. Request to approve the following field trips as reviewed and forwarded by building principals and district administrations. This field trip is for the high school, AP environmental and AP biology, twelve to twenty-one students. To Wallop Island, Chickati Bay Field Station. Dates five twenty-two to twenty-five, twenty twenty-four. Students in district not to exceed cost seven thousand dollars. Cost estimated based on attendance and include fees for substitutes and contractual overnight pay. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. McKinney, typically you would make the, the motion and then, uh, there would be a request for a second.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the request for this field trip. Second. Motion has been made and second it. Any discussion? Hearing?
Seeing no discussion, be moved to consent, correct? Oh, we're taking action tonight. I'm so sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next item, four point zero four. Approval to reschedule two thousand twenty-four Japan exchange trip. Motion to approve rescheduling the twenty-four, twenty twenty-four Japan exchange trip. Request to approve shift in a previous approved trip to Kama Joe School of Japan from summer twenty twenty-four to summer twenty-five. The reschedule is due to low applications. I make a motion that we do approve rescheduling this trip.
Second.
Hearing a second?
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That is my report, right in my section.
Thank you, Mr. McKinney. Mr. Saylor, uh, section five is business.
Mr. Weaver, five point oh one, Finance Committee of the whole. We wanna win this month again. I understand the Flyers made a big trade, so. Let's get going. Where'd he go?
Good evening, everybody. Yes, I was inviting several people down. Uh, so tonight, uh, without further ado, we have Mr. Carl Hogan. He is going to provide the necessary audit report for, um, the school year ended June thirty, two thousand twenty-three.
So like Mr. Weaver said, this is June thirty, two thousand twenty-three. I just picked a couple excerpts out from the audit report. We're at the point where we're gonna be finalizing the report, it looks like tomorrow. We had a couple administrative things to take, uh, into account today. But, um, after today, we're gonna go ahead, finalize this report and get it to the agencies that we need to get it to. But, um, the numbers we're gonna present here tonight, I think back in November, we kinda nailed down the numbers. Did the necessary filings with the state related to the annual financial report. And we kind of brought everything to a close and we're here tonight with the final audit report for June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Um, as you get, um, in process for your actual year, your twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, budget coming up. The first three pages I put on here tonight is your independent auditor's report, um, for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. The first two paragraphs basically stating that the numbers that were presented to us by management for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three were fairly presented. The rest of the auditor's report has remained consistent year over year. There was no changes. I'm basically outlining what our responsibilities are, what management's responsibilities are, what responsibilities were taken for the different sections of the audit report. I do wanna point out the required supplementary information, um, at the, in the middle of page two there. I encourage everybody to read Management's Discussion Analysis, pages, I think it's like four through fifteen. And it kinda gives everybody a quick snapshot, um, for June thirty, two thousand twenty-three. Without reading, you know, I think the audit reports up to about seventy pages at this point in time, so. Also, um, I like to point out, um, within required supplementary information, one of the, uh, schedules we're gonna highlight here tonight is on the right-hand side here, the budgetary comparison schedule for the general fund, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Kind of highlights, um, your budget revenues and expenditures and how they came in, um, year, uh, for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Um, so as you can see up at the top, I'm gonna give a quick, um, snapshot. Revenues budgeted at a hundred and eighteen million. They came in at a hundred and twenty-four million. And what you're gonna see is, um, your local source revenues were three point one million dollars more than anticipated. And a big chunk of this is related to your earned income taxes each year. It seems like your earned income taxes coming better than anticipated, but at the same time, I think I've stressed this before. This is the type of revenue source you wanna actually, you know, be conservative with. And, but each year, just over the past couple of years, you know, earned income taxes and then previous year's transfer taxes have come in better than anticipated. And, um, given a kind of a cushion related to local source revenues. State source revenues were two point three million dollars more than anticipated. A big chunk of this is related to your basic ed and state ed subsidies. You adopted your budget, the state adopted their budget after the fact, um, with more than anticipated monies for that. In addition, there were some state and sinking, or sinking and rental subsidies related to some of your construction projects that weren't originally anticipated that were received in two thousand twenty-three as well, which accounted for a big piece of the revenues being more than anticipated. Now, your expenditures, um, I think I've said this in the past, um, the district did a really good job. In terms of the expenditures, um, a lot of the, your expenditures were within, you know, like a percentage point. When you look at it, you know, your expenditures were one point seven million dollars more than budget of about a hundred and ten million. When you look at that as a percentage, um, that's, you know, uh, within a very good margin of error. Plus, a lot of those expenditures more than budget were related to some grant revenues that you didn't anticipate. So when you get grant revenues, most of the times, those grant revenues are matched with a corresponding, uh, revenue. And that kinda accounts for a lot of that. But overall, when you look at your expenditures, you have some ups and you have some downs. You can't really anticipate what's gonna happen during your long year. But when you look at it and when you, in comparison to a hundred and ten million dollars, one point seven million dollars, um, within that is, uh, good. You have your other financing sources uses and the other financing sources uses, um, were in line with, were but, um, with your debt service. So at the beginning of the budget process, you had anticipated to use two point three million dollars of fund balance. You actually added two point seven million dollars of fund balance, um, for a positive variance of five million dollars. Fund balance at the beginning of the year for the general fund, seventeen million. End of the year, twenty, twenty point seven million dollars. And as you can see, as I've reiterated before, most of that is being driven by the revenue side, which is something that you can't necessarily control. The other thing I like to point out, we also spent a lot of time within your capital projects fund, um, during the current year. You had to issuance a new debt as you continue to work through your ESCO projects. I think we're on ESCO five at this point in time. And at the end of the year, you still had about, uh, five point four million dollars within your capital projects fund. A lot of that to be used towards the ESCO phase five project. And then also we have the debt service fund, um, which is just a function of moving the money from the general fund to pay for your debt service maturities as they become due. The next slide, I'm gonna point out, uh, left-hand side there is your balance sheet. Basically is your current assets over your current liabilities, the excess of those assets over your liabilities, being your fund balance. Fund balance within the general fund, as we just went over the ins and the outs for the year, is twenty point seven million dollars. The state allows you to have eight percent of unassigned fund balance of your next year's expenditure budget. That equates to ten million dollars, um, as you could see there. So that means you need to find a home or commit or assign fund balance for one-time, non-recurring expenditures. And like most school districts, um, a big chunk of that is usually put aside for capital projects because you wanna put that money aside, um, for those one-time, non-recurring capital expenditures that you don't necessarily have to go out and borrow money for. In addition, um, there's still monies, um, sitting aside for the employer retire, retirement rate stabilization. Years ago, this, uh, the board put away money to kinda smooth over the increases in the Piers' rate. As those rates aren't increasing as much, you're spending down those monies. Curriculum and instruction, um, was an amount that was put together in, uh, you know, in the current year for some new curriculum initiatives. You still have five hundred thousand dollars related to a surplus related to some of the COVID nineteen expenditures that didn't occur, um, in twenty twenty-one. And then also you use five hundred thousand dollars to balance your twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And then you see there, you have your capital projects fund, the five point four million dollars of bond monies, um, not expended as of year end. The other slide and the other side there, I just wanted to kind of highlight, um, your debt service. I think that's one of the most important footnotes in the back. And the smoothing out of your debt service maturities over five years and the next five years. So, um, projected as of this point in time, the district's debt service will be, um, paid out through two thousand and thirty-three. And then the last thing I wanna point out, um, we talked about what kind of audit report, uh, you had, which was an unmodified clean audit report. We talked about the major financial results, um, some of the other things, um, other funds that we do audit. We also have a food service fund that we audited during the process. And then also, um, you receive, uh, a fair amount of federal awards. And as part of our audit, we also have to do a single audit. So, um, during the current year, your single audit, the major program that was audited was the IDEA, our Special Education Cluster Program. Every two years, we have to kinda rotate the program. So in the case of this school district, um, we typically test the IDEA program, the Child Nutrition Program. And in recent years, we've been testing the ESR program as well. But the ESR program didn't meet the definition of a major program as we tested it in the previous year. And seven hundred and fifty thou, and seven hundred and fifty thousand wasn't spent in the current year. But also I like to highlight here, um, also that this kind of highlights the main results of the, uh, audit. Unmodified audit report, like we talked about, on the auditor's opinion. Also, no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that would need to be reported within our report. No instances of non-compliance and no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, um, related to your federal awards. Just in addition to the annual financial report, um, that we spoke about earlier, we filed with the state in a timely fashion. The Business Office will also file this audit with the Federal Audit Clearinghouse for the federal wards. And in addition with, um, the Emma, uh, reporting relate, related to your bonds. That needs to be done within two hundred and seventy days of year end, which will be done in a timely fashion, so. If anybody has any questions, or I could talk about the report some more?
Actually, I actually have a question, but it's, it's, Mr. Weaver, it's more to you and I apologize for not sending it in advance. Something just clicked in, uh, when I was looking. So when we prepared the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, we were looking at, well, we did a two point six three percent tax increase, cause we have a shortfall of two million, twenty-seven thousand. We were looking at real estate at seventy-two million, correct? But it then came in at, I gotta go back, seventy-four? The real estate? So what happens to that? How does that? How does that correlate with, with, with the budget? So for instance, it looked like we had one point five million plus in earned income and two million plus in real estate for twenty, for two thousand twenty-three, from what we budgeted. Looks like the, the budget, the budget had a presentation of seventy-two million?
So, I'll have to look into that because I thought we were pretty much on as far as the real estate, the actual real estate tax goes. I don't know if it gets lumped together in some way, shape or form. What, what kind of document are you looking at, Mr. Saylor?
The finalized budget for, the finalized budget for, that the school board passed in June and the information provided in this.
Oh, okay. So that is, yeah, so the last presentation,
Yeah.
uh, provides the current assessment based upon the tax, um, at that point in time. Until the board approves the new tax rate, then what we do is we add the new, the new increased revenue onto that number. So that's why it becomes seventy-four.
Yeah, so, page fourteen has two thousand twenty-three real estate, earned income tax at sixteen million, sixteen million, one hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and twenty-five. We projected in the budget fourteen, seven.
Correct. Yeah, that's earned income tax.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
So, but we really, we really received sixteen, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So I'm trying, so we did a, we did a tax increase of two point six three percent because we had the shortfall. But now we didn't have the shortfall?
That is correct. Actually, we did not have a shortfall. We had planned for, um, based upon the current trend and analysis and the economic data that was being provided. Remember, they said that we were gonna have a hard fall?
Yeah.
So remember, earned income tax is how successful people are being and how well they're doing in their, in their wages. So the anticipation was that we were going to have a hard fall economically and that people were gonna lose their jobs. Everything was gonna go up in the pace with inflation. We bout, tried to balance that with the fact that we had Berkeimer numbers that were exceeding their own projection. So we cut right in the middle of that. That's just our conservative nature. This year, when we planned, we are saying now we recognize that as a consistent earned income tax model. And now we've recognized that for twenty-four, twenty-five budget purposes.
We recognize a higher number?
It is a higher number, yes.
Okay. Does it ever come in, it never comes in lower though, correct?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Never comes in lower, right? You never, it would, I know, it's verbrating. It's never coming in.
Yeah, the acoustics are.
It's never coming in lower. So, you know, we, we had a tax increase to generate two million in additional funding. And then we realized an additional two million additional funding. So that, where does that money go? Where does that extra one point seven five million dollars, where's that going?
Sure. So, uh, by board motion, we actually took the differences. At the end of the day, when we put it in the canister and it spit out, hey, you have a surplus. We took those monies and then. a surplus, we took those monies and then we transferred those monies. We put a million back into the Peasars' reserve, and we put 3.3 million dollars into capital projects, because we know that we have about 33 million dollars in capital projects. We only have about 8 million dollars in reserves at this point in time to offset that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I apologize. It's hard. Any other questions for Mr. Hogan or myself at this point in time? Okay, and of course, you always know that you can send emails, and Amy and I can get on that and get you some information in case you have other questions. Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Okay. Moving on. Budget presentation for tonight, guess what? There's not much that happens between the last presentation that we had and this tonight, simply because of the holidays are in there and there's not much movement. However, they did certify the Peasars' rate. The Peasars' rate that we had projected was somewhere around 34.73, and it came down to 34%, and now they certified it at 33.90. So when we planned the budget, we had a 34% in there. And then, so what we have to do is we have to recognize a reduction on the expenditures, which you'll see on the next slide when I zip through. But we also have to recognize 50% reduction in the revenue side, because if we're taking the expenditures out for Peasars, we have to take out half of that for the revenue side. Okay, so we're actually reducing our revenues by 228,000. That leaves us with a total of 125,509.140. And again, if it pleases the board, I'll move forward to what changed from the last presentation on the expenditure side. That is double what we reduced on the revenue side, because the rate is 100% reduced on the expenditure side. That's a reduction of 456,713 by the mere certification of a lower Peasars' rate. So that went down less than 1%, and we recognize savings of almost 500,000 on the expenditure side. That should tell you how large of an item Peasars' is. Just want to make that point. Okay. As Mr. Moran will get to in a second, we have true-up costs, 262,349. That's highlighted. We haven't taken that, we haven't utilized yet that number at all for offsetting 2425. Total expenditures then are 129,491 as of tonight, compared to the 125,509. That leaves us with a shortfall of 3,908,200. That is a 5.04% tax increase. Again, we are at 5.34. So again, a mere reduction of that Peasars' rate results in a much lower tax increase at this point in time as we stand tonight. Any questions on that? Again, there's a lot of movement that we have yet to do. We have to harden on the ESBI function, and we continue to look at ways to save expenditures and move forward. We're at the beginning of this process. This is the second presentation. We'll have six or seven by the time that we had final budget approval. Any questions? Tonight's budget. Okay, Mr. Moran, true-up costs.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weaver. So this evening, providing an annual report on our true-up costs for our returning board members and new board members. This process is really looking at the salaries that we budgeted for 2023, '24 compared to the actual salaries that we experienced throughout the school year. And to do that, we take individuals that may have retired or separated from the school district at a certain salary, and then they are replaced by a new staff member with a certain salary, and take that difference to really look at what our actual savings or loss might be within salaries. So for this year's true-up costs, you can see, we take a look at our professional staff members, our administrators, as well as our at-will or confidential supervisor positions. On the left-hand side, you'll see that we had 13 separations from the district from the time that the budget was presented to the end of the school year for 2022, '23. Those salaries in the budget equaled 1,32,289,000. And you can see that when we replaced those staff members, the new salaries was 782,828. So for total savings under our professional staff members of 249,461. On the right-hand side, you can see we did the same thing for our administrative positions as well as our at-will positions. And you can see that a total savings in that area was 12,888. Total, our savings, as we looked at the true-up costs, came in at 262,349. Again, this money, we utilize this process to assist us in our 2425 budget process. Any questions on the true-up costs? Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Okay, last component. I'm very happy to bring this forward to the school board tonight. You saw this for many months at this point in time. I'm recommending moving forward with a concession stand to be completed. A joint venture between KPN Contract, which is this approval, and then our own internal staff would be able to handle the remaining amounts of the electric insulation and the floor epoxy in-house. It was reviewed at the Safety and Operations Committee on January 4th, last Thursday. And it is, if passed, this would be the beginning of the end of a four-year process. We do have money set aside in our Bond Fund 2020-A series, specifically set aside for the turf field projects, and this is available for us to recommend and move forward and have it be paid. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weaver. I'm going to conglomerate. I move to approve vendor for concession stand reservations as 5.02, as well as 5.03, Approval Property Tax and Rebate Program Resolution, and an approval for stipulation to settle in 5.04, and I so move.
A motion and a second. Are there any questions or discussion?
Mr. Subers, do you not like that as conglomerated, or do you want to go?
No, I just recall, as you made that, that we should have approved the consent agenda. I was thinking at the time that it was a work session. So we'll have to go back to that. But your motion, it has been made.
Yeah, so prior to, before, before, yeah, before doing, before doing that, seeing that we have some consent agenda items coming up on the consent agenda, Ms. White, if you don't mind, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, which is 5.05, 7.01, 2, 4, 5, 6, and 7, 8.01, 2, 3, 4, and 5, and I so move.
Second.
A motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Any discussion? Is there any discussion? No discussion?
Thank you.
Consent agenda is approved.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve 5.02, 3, and 4. Again, approval of the vendor concessions for stand renovations, approval of the property tax and rebate program resolution, and approval of the stipulation to settle, and I so move.
I still second.
Thank you again, Mr. Liggett.
That ends the section, yeah?
No.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. You know what, Jason? It was like, Mr. Saylor, I'm sorry, you, I just felt like we were just moving right along. Okay, motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Thank you. 5.05 is consent, which is the approval for the bus drivers. I'm going to make a motion to, for 5.06, which is the approval of the 2023 and 2024 education contracts.
Second.
A motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Against? Motion carries.
Thank you. I'm going to move 5.07 and 5.08, which are requests to approve confidential settlement and release agreements in lieu of Fabe as recommended, but are solicitors to conglomerate both, and I so move.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Thank you. There are no grants or donations, and that ends my section.
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. I appreciate your efficiency. Section 6, Payment of Bills, Mr. Keenan.
Section 6.01, I have, I'll make a motion for ratification of bills and payroll and authorization of payments.
There's a motion, is there a second? Motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
All right.
Motion carries.
And 6.02, I make a motion to approve Treasurers' Report and Financial Statements.
Motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
And that ends my section.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan. Mrs. Sadler, Professional Development.
Section 7.01, Consent, Acceptance of Resignations and Retirements. 7.02 is Consent, Approval of Leaves of Absence. 7.03, Approval of Administrative Appointment. A request to ratify or approve the provisional employment of Natalie Kuiper-Hranko for Curriculum and Instruction Supervisor. I make a motion to approve, and I so move.
A motion and a second? With regards to discussion, Mr. Haran, you have some words to offer us? Thank you.
Okay, good evening again. It is with much excitement that I introduce to our school community and school board members Mrs. Natalie Ranko as our recommended candidate for the Supervisor of Curriculum and Instruction, Humanities Position. Mrs. Ranko is here with us this evening. Just a few words about Mrs. Ranko. She is a lifelong learner, which can be exemplified by her professional career as a research scientist and her tenure as an educational leader. Mrs. Ranko earned her Bachelor of Arts in Biology from the Pennsylvania State University. Upon graduating, Mrs. Ranko served as a research scientist for 10 years, where she had her research published in four peer-reviewed journals, and was issued three patents for intellectual property. Mrs. Ranko later pursued her love of teaching and learning and earned a Master's in Primary Education from Wilmington University. In addition, Mrs. Ranko is certified as a reading specialist and principal in the state of Pennsylvania. Mrs. Ranko comes to Perkman Valley with over 17 years of experience serving public schools as an educator. She began her teaching career with the Phoenixville Area School District, where she served students for 15 years as an elementary teacher, middle-level teacher, and instructional coach. Mrs. Ranko continued her leadership path with the Phoenixville Area School District, where she has most recently served as an elementary assistant principal for the past two and a half years. During her time at Phoenixville, Mrs. Ranko is noted for establishing a district-wide coaching program from the ground up, as well as for her commitment to professional learning, collaboration, problem-solving, and lifelong learning, to name a few. Mrs. Ranko's educational background as a teacher, instructional coach, and building administrator, as well as her professional career as a research scientist, make her a tremendous asset to our leadership team. The combination of experiences from both the public and private sector have equipped her to serve our students, staff, and community as the supervisor of curriculum and instruction for humanities. With that, we are excited for the opportunity to have Mrs. Ranko join the Perkman Valley community. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Moran. So there was a motion and a second, there were some comments. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Opposed? And the motion carries. Congratulations, Mrs. Ranko. Thank you for joining us.
Section 7.04 is Consent, Approval of Long-Term Substitute, Extended Daily Substitute Appointments. 7.05, Consent, Approval of Co-Curricular Appointments. 7.06, Consent, Approval of Winter Coaches for 2023, 2024 Season. 7.07, Consent, Approval of After-School Professional Personnel. And that ends my section.
Thank you, Mrs. Sadler. Mr. Fountain, Professional, Support Personnel, Section 8.
8.01, 02, 03, 04, and 05 are all on consent, and that ends my section.
Thank you, Mr. Fountain. Mr. Liggett, Section 9, Governance.
Thank you, Ms. White. 9.01 is a second reading and the adoption of the policies that are listed, and I so
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second? Any conversation? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Thank you. 9.02 is a discussion of the board appointments to the committees. Ms. White, would you like to lead that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Liggett. So an email went out last week, yes, last week, with the final appointments for the committees for the 2024 school year, well, calendar year, I guess I should say. I had not heard really any feedback from anybody for or against the committee assignments, and so they are as presented. I don't know if anybody would like further discussion around them, or if there are any questions. I know Mr. Larson had broached the conversation about the policy committee. If there is any other desire to have conversation about that, we could have that now. All right, I just wanted to, you know, give an opportunity to have a discussion around that, so go ahead, Mr. Liggett.
All right, thank you. 9.03 is a discussion of the 2024 Board Goals. There is an attached document here with the board goals. And since this is a discussion point, would you, again, Ms. White, would you like to lead that?
Yeah, so these particular board goals, they were developed, the attachment is from the 2023 board goals. They were approved in January of last year. And in conversation with Dr. Russell and also Mr. McKinney, what I was, what the conversation, the way that the conversation led, was that what we would like to do collectively, if the board is amenable to it, is to really focus this particular calendar year on the principles of governance, and actually make those our board goals. And I wanted to do that for several reasons. First, I think that although board goals are important in terms of what we are tasked and set out to do, what I think is the foundation for any goals that are developed is truly the principles of governance and leadership, which is actually the next item on the section 9.04. So in my view, and I'm open to the dialogue around this, I feel as though we cannot effectively work towards specific board goals above and beyond the principles of governance and leadership if each of us, as elected board members, are not upholding the listed principles of governance. And I open the floor. Mr. McKinney?
Thank you, Ms. White. I think these principles for governance and leadership provide a pretty good blueprint for us to operate as a board, and I hope that my colleagues here find that they do serve the purpose of, again, moving us forward in regards to acting in a way that moves the district in a direction that, again, is, you know, promoting.
Does anyone have anything else to add? Dr. Reston?
Yeah. I, I think this is a good basis for the development of goals. We can take these as our goals. The only thing I'd say is that I would suggest that we periodically and proactively consider conducting a review as to how we are aligning with these goals and what specifically we're doing that shows that we are working towards these goals. If you, you know, to, in my mind, in my experience, a good goal is something that you can actually point to and say, we did this. Or you can, you know, different activities leading that show that you're fulfilling these goals. I think, you know, we should, we should commit to, maybe on a quarterly basis, taking a look at these and saying, okay, for this particular bullet point, under, under, under a heading, you know, how have, what have we done in the last quarter to work towards this goal? How are we achieving that? So that's just my suggestion there.
I appreciate that suggestion, and honestly, that's sort of where my mindset was in terms of thinking about what our goals could and should be in reviewing the list from 2023. My, my feeling really was that there were several items that were tangible examples in my mind that we were not achieving with regard to upholding the principles of governance and leadership. And so as a board collectively, as we are, you know, a newly seated board with board members that have never previously been on a school board, I think that starting with the principles is really a foundational, a foundational goal in itself. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, then we can move to the discussion on 9.04. Mr. Liggett?
All right, thank you. 9.04 is the principles of government. And I make a motion then to commit to these principles that are stated in policy 11.
There's a motion and a second. As far as discussion goes, Mr. Liggett, would you mind, just because it's in your section, would you be able to read down, just so the public understands exactly what these principles that we are attesting, that we are going to uphold are?
Certainly. I'll, I'll read the, the headline points of this and not the sub-points. Basically, the principles of governance and leadership that come to us from the PSBA state the following as essentially goals. To lead responsibly, to act ethically, to plan thoughtfully, evaluate continuously, communicate clearly, advocate earnestly, and to govern effectively.
Thank you, Mr. Liggett. And again, you know, these goals are going to be posted as part of the agenda for the public. And so I would then implore the public to hold each of us as elected nine individuals responsible for upholding these particular principles of governance and leadership. And so to Dr. Weston's point about, you know, a temperature check, that these things are actually being adhered to and followed, I think that the accountability is something that if each of us as a vote, an individual vote for a collective vote of nine are saying that we are going to uphold, we owe that not only to each other as, as, as counterparts and as colleagues, but also to the public that have duly elected us. So there was a motion and a second. We can take a vote if there's no other discussion. All in favor? All opposed? And so the public has our commitment as nine individuals that we will uphold the principles of governance and leadership as presented by PSBA.
Eight.
Eight. I'm so sorry. I didn't hear your nay. So.
No, 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 no. There's just one.
Oh, and Miss Campley. Understood. I forgot that she wasn't here. I apologize for that. So that will be noted in the record. Thank you, Ms. Widener. Mr. Liggett?
That concludes my section.
Thank you, Mr. Liggett. And that brings us to closing items. 10.01, our comments from the audience.
Hi, Tim Jagger, Laura Frederick. I just had a quick question. I know this isn't a dialogue thing, but the policy committee, are you saying then that any members of the community are able to come to the policy committee and have open dialogue with you, other than just like the three-minute discussions? All right, thank you.
Are there any other community comments? Okay, are there board comments tonight?
Ms. White, just real briefly, I just wanted to note that Mr. Molinar has moved on from Perkman Valley. I've had the pleasure of, of knowing Mr. Molinar for a few years as my son went to Middle School East. I saw Mr. Molinar as an active member of our community through Perkman Valley Youth Basketball and other, other activities. I just wanted to wish him the best of luck. He, he's been a pillar of our community. He's someone that lives in our school district. He's someone that has advocated a lot for our students in our school district. And, you know, for, for me personally, he was my son's principal during a horrific time for our community during, or assistant principal during COVID. And I just, you know, I thank him and everything that he's done in our school district, and I wish him the best of luck in his new endeavors ahead.
I second that. Thank you, Mr. Sailor. I appreciate you making that comment. Any other board comments?
Yeah, Ms. White, I would also like to, you know, re-enforce Mr. Sailor's comments, you know, in reference to Mr. Molinar. He has been an asset to the district, having known him for years. So, yes, I'm glad that, that was brought up.
Anyone else? Okay, no further board comments?
One, one last thing. I just wanted to apologize. I got a leaking toilet in my house. That's the thing. I don't want to be disrespecting anybody here.
Good thing you're getting out early tonight, Mr. Liggett.
Yeah, I just told her every 10 minutes.
We could be here for another two or three hours. I've got more to say.
Actually, Joe, are you busy?
10.03 is notice of video disclaimer. 10.04 is adjournment. Prior to adjournment, I will say that we had an executive session this evening to discuss legal.